Good evening, everyone. I'm calling this meeting to order. This meeting has been given public notice in accordance with Section 19.83 and Section 19.84, Wisconsin statutes, in such form that will apprise the general public and news media of such a matter that is intended for consideration and action. Roll call shows that all are accounted and trustee Peeper is absent and excused. Now, will you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance and for a moment of silence? I'm going to go into the President's Report. Good evening, everyone. I hope that everyone enjoyed their weekend. I got a lot of yard work done. I'm sure you all did, too. And I wish, I want to wish everyone an incredibly happy Cinco de Mayo. But unfortunately, we have to be here at a village board meeting. We can't be out celebrating. But thank you for showing. For those that don't know, this is now day 20 on the job, and I only have 1,075 more days left in my three-year term. Not that I'm counting the days. I would like to share what has been going on since my last President's Report update of two weeks ago. On Arbor Day, I had a fun time reading an Arbor Day proclamation and chatting with approximately 30 elementary students at Spaslon Park, along with planting a tree. I want to thank my trustees Bob Warren, Rick Miller, Meg Cutts, and Jan Miller for being there as well. This past Wednesday, I attended the Germantown area Chamber of Commerce Annual Community Award Ceremony, where I gave a talk along with presenting the award recipients a village proclamation. I want to thank trustee Bob Warren and trustee Rick Miller for being there as well. Also, on Wednesday, I was invited by the governor's office to attend an event at County Line Elementary School with the governor and others who were touring the school, where, among other things, we talked about how to move Germantown forward. This past Saturday, I got to tap the keg, which I have never done before, at a MyFest celebration at the Beer Stube. And I'm pleased to say that at my fourth official public event, I didn't screw up. And I would hate to have killed a keg of beer, but all went well. Finally, if I knew I was going to have this much fun, I would have done this much earlier run for office. On a serious note, since our last update, it has been busy. I have met with the Chair of the Economic Development Commission to discuss two initiatives that I committed to do during the election, the first being to conduct an annual review and update of our 2050 plan, with the focus being first on the planned neighborhoods with known development projects in the queue. The second initiative being the curb appeal or beautification project, where we will recognize businesses. We all want to have a pleasant shopping experience when we visit our shops and businesses, and curb appeal goes a long way with fulfilling that experience. And to that point, I do have all the point-of-contact information for the big-box stores that are on cue and elsewhere that I'll be reaching out and contacting those owners, just to have a discussion in terms of what can the village do better to support you. I also met with the Chair of the Park and Rec Commission to discuss what they will soon be vetting at their next meeting, the potential land swap of existing parkland for more parkland. Going forward, we will let the commissions and committees do their jobs by discussing and voting on matters before they get to the village board, thus creating more efficient and efficient government. I've also had frequent meetings with our village administrator, who can't be here tonight because of illness, and our village attorney, where we discuss issues facing the village along with strategies to move our village forward. I am pleased to say that these meetings are extremely productive and transparent. During one of these meetings, we discussed one of those strategies to move Germantown forward, that is, the Celebrate Germantown campaign, where we will embark on social media, both print and one- or two-minute video segments. And as shared before, we will highlight our great parks, our schools, our wonderful restaurants, and the many events that are held at Fireman's Park. This initiative will be managed and funded by the Tourism Commission, as there is a direct link. In addition, there may be opportunities to partner with both the Chamber and the school district on this very important initiative as well. We also discussed the next steps associated with seeking additional community engagement for the properties that the village owns located at what's called the Village Center. Tonight, we will be discussing the funding for those properties, because we need to pay the bills. The proposed plan and timeline with additional community engagement will be shared at the next village board meeting by our village administrator. After receiving an email from a constituent, I went to her farm to review a real and present trash issue that is impacting her property from a neighboring development, along with working with staff on an appropriate mitigation plan going forward. At last week's Plan Commission meeting, where based on community feedback during the public hearing portion of the meeting, we voted to table an action on a conditional use permit for a local business. That very next day, Plan Commission member trustee Bob Warren and myself visited the business and spent over an hour touring the site, so that we are better able to discuss the matter at future meetings. Also, during the same Plan Commission meeting, we teed up for discussion of potentially creating a policy on the amount of multifamily housing development in the village. Staff conducted a study, and today, our mix of single-family to multifamily residents is 75% single-family to 25% multifamily. During the election, I committed to doing this study to take the emotions out of the argument on whether we needed more multifamily housing or not. Tonight, we will discuss this at the board level. Promises made and promises kept. Finally, I want to commit on lowering the temperature at our meetings. At last week's Plan Commission meeting, I added language to the citizen input section of the agenda that included comments that may be injurious to village personnel or other individuals will not be allowed. When I was the school board president, I had that language added for our school district meetings, and it was well received. Of course, we want and expect comments from the citizens, as we work for you, and we want you to hold us all accountable. However, in saying that, please assist me by not being injurious. Again, it's been a very busy couple of weeks since we last met. I wish I could get things done quicker, but please know that we will get it done. I'm truly looking forward to the next 1,075 days and all the exciting things that we will accomplish together as we move Germantown forward. Thank you. We are now on to item five, announcements of forthcoming events of public interest committee and department reports. Terry?
Public Works will meet in this room on Wednesday of this week at 5:30 PM.
Thank you. And I apologize to trustee Miller, Rick Miller.
General Government and Finance will meet on Monday, the 19th, in this boardroom.
Thank you. And trustee Cutts?
Public Safety will meet on Monday, June 2nd, at 6:00 PM in this boardroom. And then I also have a little information. There's an organization in our community called Our Kids Closet, and they're currently located in the Ascension Building. And they offer like-new clothing, shoes, and more at no cost to low-income families with children. And they get to shop four times a year. They're going to be having an open house on Wednesday, May 14th, from 4:00 to 7:00, with tours and refreshments for anybody that wants to come see it, find out about it, need help. I do have two flyers. They're just back in the corner there. If anybody's interested, just grab that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would any other trustees like to make any comments? Okay. Would you like to say something?
Yes, please. Thank you. I just wanted to do a shout-out. This week, if you don't know, actually, May the 4th to May the 10th is Professional Municipal Clerks Week. So, the 56th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week was initiated in 1969 by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, and officially declared Municipal Clerks Week by President Ronald Reagan in 1984, for the vital services that they provide for local government in the community. The Office of the Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and provides a professional link between the citizens, local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And I just wanted to let my team, Casey and Maddie, who are not here tonight, know how appreciative they are and how much we love serving our constituents here in Germantown. So, Happy Professional Clerks Weeks to them. The next item I would like to talk about is, if you have not noticed already, one of the things that our village president has implemented is the back-key notice, which is on our village agendas for all agendas. So whether that's advisory board, a committee, or a commission, that notice is on there. So our trustees, you do not have to reach out to my department to advise me if you will be in attendance. For each of you that chair meetings, if you see in the audience any members from other boards, committees, or commissions, they will be covered, as all of our agendas will now be inclusive of this. And that's all I have.
Great. Any other additional comments or questions? Okay, moving on to item six, citizen input. Please be advised, per Section 19.842, that information and comment will be received from the public. It is the policy of this municipality, and that the public input be limited to three-minute period per person, with time extension granted at the discretion of the chairperson. Be advised that there may be limited discussion of the information received, but no action will be taken under public comments. I will also add that, and this will be on future items on the agenda, that comments that may be injurious to village personnel or other individuals will not be allowed, and I'll be the gatekeeper for that. So would anybody like to come forward tonight and speak?
Oh, no. I want to lower the temperature. During the election, it got very contentious in these meetings. I want to be respectful. We want to be respectful of everybody.
I think we've been respectful, but I think some people should be held accountable, and I think we should have the right to do that.
Like I said, I'm not going to get back and forth on this. I expect to be held accountable, because we work for you. So, please go forward.
Okay. Again, we're talking about spending money on fire and police departments. And the citizens of this community would like the board to be more respective of what they can afford. You have all these grand ideas, and they're wonderful. But our budget, right now, we're in a lot of trouble because of the previous board's decisions that were very bad. Financial decisions were made. Meetings were being done in secret, and before anything should be happening, we should have boards where we can speak out and hear what we think we want. It's our money paying for this. And to have all these closed meetings without the public is ridiculous. It's not right. And not only that, but when you talk about the growth of Germantown, I looked it up. From 20,005 to now, it's only grown 15-point-something percent. This is not a rip-roaring community where you can just come in and bulldoze and buy whatever you want, spend millions of dollars, and build all these grand ideas which we can't afford. And I think this has got to have a different attitude. It's our money. We can't keep spending this kind of money. And I think this board should tighten up a little bit on their spending for a lot of things, because you talk like we just got an ATM that you can just go to and take whatever you want. And who's in charge? And three people on the finance committee are going to be in charge of what happens here? And not only that, but if you're going to move forward, you move forward with the community, not what you as a board think is right, because everybody's got a different idea. And I think if we have any contracts, again, with our attorney, I think we need to make sure you have an out on a contract, because if we had that on these contracts with this land, we wouldn't be in this position we were in. And I think we need more wisdom, and we don't want multi-housing. We don't need it. And I drove around Mequon, Wauwatosa, Peewaqui, all these communities you're comparing to, and we're not like them at all. We're a small community, and the people here would like to stay that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward tonight and speak? And please have your Yale sheet, too. I forgot to say that. So.
Thank you.
Good evening and welcome.
All right. Melanie Smythe, N140W17938, Cedar Lane. First of all, I would like to commend the Clerk's Office, Donna, Casey, and Maddie, on what a fine job they have been doing. I've had multiple interactions with them, and they're incredibly professional and get the job done. So, I do appreciate it. Thank you. For the rest of us, at the moment, we're going through a transition phase. Eight weeks ago, we had a change. We're still, we have to bring people along. People are in different stages of this transition. Some people are back before the election. Some people are after the election. Some people are thinking three months ahead. So, we have a new leader. I think it's a good idea that we appear to be stepping back a little bit and taking a look around at some of these things, so that we can make the village better. It does seem clear to me that maybe this TID won't happen. Maybe that we should take another look at what is really the true village center, and how much it is, rather than just looking at one tiny little corner of the village, which is what we seem to do a lot, is we'll take a microscopic little area, and then all the attention gets to that, when we should be stepping back and looking at the entire village center. If you think about it, earlier today, at the public safety meeting, there was a discussion about the public safety building, and someone mentioned that Pilgrim and Mequon might be a good location for that. That hasn't really been discussed. Then we have the Blackstone Golf Course land swap. And at first, I was against that, but having thought about it, there may be some potential opportunities there for a marketplace. And as long as we don't have, as long as we sort out the multifamily issue and figure out what we really want in terms of housing in this, in the village, I think there could be some good opportunities there. What are we doing? Okay. The last thing I'd like to suggest is that in these resolutions for bonding, it seems to me that we should probably remove the Grosznik from this particular one. At the GGF meeting, I asked for, if there were alternatives to funding, and there were really none that were brought forward, except that we should sell property. The reason why I think the Grosznik property should be pulled out of that bond is because by the time you get to the end of the 20 years, we will have paid $2 million for something that should have been less than $1 million in the sequence of how it should have been purchased. But we ended up spending a little bit over $1 million. $2 million for the Grosznik property, it should come out of the bond. Anyhow, I'm looking forward to opening up some of these other planning discussions. I think it's past time. They were supposed to have happened in the 2050 plan. And I really look forward to the residents being heard and proper representation of all of the ideas being thought through. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward tonight and speak? Good evening and welcome. I'm doing.
Doug Lowman, W180N9881, Rivers Bend Circle West. Don't know why it's divided up east and west. It's pretty small. First and foremost, a couple of Planning Commission meetings ago, one of the commissioners asked that the public comment was going to be at the end of the meeting, and they made a motion to move it to the front of the meeting. And I really appreciated that, because it gave an opportunity for many people to make public comments. Secondly, I'm still, and I've said this before here in public comment, I'm still very confused that as discussions come up for growth for the village of Germantown, presentations get put forward that has high-density housing, and that high-density housing brings a whole bunch of people into this room, and they're all yelling and screaming and everything like that. But yet, we chose to have our TID-10 presentation completed with an input from Rinca that had a lot of high-density housing, essentially going to put 600 vehicles at the corner of Mequon and Pilgrim. You know, it's an untenable situation when you look at it that way. In something that's been stated often when discussing TID-10, is that, okay, that was a notional thing, and we've got to come up with something new, and once the TID gets done. But there's no need to change it. There's no requirement to change it. There's no commitment to change it. No. I mean, once the TID gets done, then the voters lose their power, essentially, until the next election cycle. The whole presentation for TID-10 gave me an air of, had an air to me of, if we build it, they will come. Makes a wonderful movie, but it's at huge risk to the residents of Germantown. Inobfuscation doesn't help this at all. When I observe public comment here in this venue, oftentimes I see frustration on the faces of the people behind the dais. And when, you know, all that the commentators want is for you to hear them out and for you to say what you mean, and to mean what you say. Without that, there's a huge disconnect in trust. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward to speak tonight? Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Skydive Fleet, W159N154, Old Farm Road, Germantown. Just really some observations today. I'll let other people speak to the community wanting lower density. That's what they do. They want lower density, so we'll have to figure that out. I understand we have to borrow for these properties, because the village board voted that we're going to take on properties. I don't know if they have the full story on what and why, but they're voting for it. So, we have to do that to protect ourselves, because we're on the hook for those properties. We've made promises and contractually obligated, so we have to buy those properties. And the question is, what do we do from there? Well, I am surely hoping that there's going to be allowed a lot of input in what to do from there, because holding on to properties, villages are not good landlords. Go read and find out. But I don't want to see this happen again next year, where we're sitting here again, having to do things. I don't like that. So, as part of the next time we look at things like this, there just needs to be more transparency, all right? I am aware that we have an asset manager, I've never had or speak in front of anyone, that went through everything in the village and said what we have, what we've got, how much life is left, any of that. We have yet to see a presentation from that person. When is that forthcoming? Because that could lead in the next budget cycle. Maybe we don't need a new $300,000 truck every year. Maybe we can refurbish what we have. We built a $42 million DPW building with big lift things, where we can lift up fire trucks and fix them. Maybe we can start fixing some of our own stuff and spread out this borrowing to help everybody, including you guys, make decisions up there. So, these are observations. I understand Phil's business, because I'm in the business. My firm does a lot of muni bond stuff. We can't really prepay these notes. We make promises to the people that buy our debt, so we can have the money, and they want to have it for eight or nine years. So, they really don't want a refunding option in there, and you don't want to call them early. Otherwise, they won't buy your debt anymore, right, Phil? So, I asked Phil about refunding the existing debt we have. Well, guess what? A lot of the debt from the other TIDS is very low-cost. I know the increment's paying it, but the other borrowing we've done is low-cost, and we have high interest rates. However, the Fed is probably going to cut interest rates at some point this year. We should relook into if we can do a refund of any kind or refinance, because the school district did that about three years ago, and they're saving literally millions of dollars for taxpayers. With the large debt that we have, well over $100 million, it might be worth looking into. So, if interest rates go down, we can maybe take a look. And I do get the 10-year, I call it the revolving door of debt that we have, where I was told by numerous trustees, I know we got to borrow every year for this and that, okay? And I made a challenge, you might remember that, some of you people, maybe not Kristen, but I said, you should find a way to lower that by half a million. Well, I mean, we're not doing that. And that's fine, but maybe we could do that in the future. Otherwise, what we're going to do is issue 10-year bonds, and then we're going to pay off the bond from 10 years ago. Then we're going to issue 10 new bonds. We'll never get that money paid off. It'll be 35 to 40 million until we're all dead and our kids, okay? So, at what point do we break the cycle and maybe try to reduce that down, so we can make it pay off a little easier? I guess no one started the time, so that's good. I don't know who did that. The last thing I'll say is, you know, in my business, I have to pay attention to the economy, okay? What are the economic conditions? It all looks good, because the market's rebounding. But there are headwinds. Interest rates are going to have to come down. At least the economists I follow say that. And manufacturing had a great, had great numbers, but that's front-loaded to try to get ahead of tariffs. All indications are, there will be a slowdown in this economy as a whole, even though we're the largest country with GDP. So, I would caution just borrowing as much money as we possibly can. Right now, we're borrowing at the highest interest rates in almost 20 years, okay? We were issuing bonds for, what, 2%? I mean, it was really, really low. And now we're going out for borrowing at 5%, 5.5%, you know, 3.5%, 3.75%. That's a cost that's extra that we did not have 10 years ago. So, we have to move forward fiscally, conservatively, in regard to So we have to move forward fiscally, conservatively in regards to borrowing. We need to look at everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward tonight to speak? Is there anyone on the web box that would like to speak? There's not. Okay, thank you very much. We're moving on to item number seven, appointments to boards, committees, or commissions. Confirmation of ethics board appointment.
As presented.
I'm sorry?
Move approval as presented.
This, second?
Second.
Second, discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to item eight, consent agenda, minutes from April 21, 2025 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve consent to agenda items A and B.
I'll second.
I forgot B, sorry. Do we have discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oh, roll call. Roll call, roll call. Donna.
Yes, sir. Okay, we'll start with, I'm so glad you guys don't change seats because I have this kind of down now. All right, so trustee Warren. Trustee Cutz.
Aye.
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Bortz.
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky. And billy president, Soderbergh.
Aye.
That motion carries. We are now on to item 11, new business. Application for amended outside premise extension. Mateo's Mexican Grill located at W 156 N 11058 Pilgrim Road.
Move approval as presented.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, sir.
Slipping down, I know. I did say.
Appreciate that. If everybody could connect, can I speak on that real quick?
Thank you for that. This is a reminder that when we're doing the minutes, oftentimes we go so fast that when we're playing it back for us to be accurate and not have to table those to act on them later, your hands being up during roll call votes until I can document it thoroughly and concisely is appreciated. So thank you for holding your hand up, and we'll try to, we're going to, I've respectfully asked President Soderbergh if we can go just a little bit slower, because when my staff and I come back to do the minutes, for our constituents to review them, I want them to be accurate. So thank you very much for slowing it down a bit.
Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, she did tell me to slow down, so I apologize. So, so discussion. Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? That motion carries. We are now on to item B, application for renewal of second-hand article dealer mall or flea market license Pilgrim Antique Mall located at W 156 N 11500 Pilgrim Road. Beverly J Solomon. Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item B as presented. Trustee Baum.
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion. Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? That motion carries. We are now on to item C, producer full-service retail sales application component brewing for Hops and Howens event on July 11, 2025 at Homestead Hollow Park. County Park. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item C as presented. Trustee Baum.
Second.
I'll second.
Trustee Miller, you second. Jan Miller, second. Okay? Do we have discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? That motion carries. We are now on to item D, Josh Tarantino, agent for L A W Development, property owner and Wendlin Nursery and Wendlin Landscape Services. Amendment to conditional use permit number 06-1989 allowing horticultural services and the retail sale of nursery products not grown on the property for the parcel located at W 172 and 10415 Division Road. I'll turn over to you, Jordan.
Thanks, Mr. President. Good evening, Board. As you mentioned, this is a conditional use permit in front of you tonight. The request is an amendment to the original conditional use permit issued to Wendlin Nursery in 1989, and it's for property located at 10415 Division Road. Here's another image of the existing property I'm sure most people are familiar with. Summary on that, again, the business established in the late 1980s, nursery products for sale. The conditional use permit is meant to maintain that, but also add in horticultural services under that CUP as their business has expanded over the years to include those type of services. It's 15-acre site, and I would be remiss that the plant commission did approve building plans and site plans for a new greenhouse building last week. So again, the CUP, retail sales of products not grown on site, horticultural services, and an update to the conditions that were under the original permit in 1989. Quickly on the building plans, it's roughly 2,500 square feet. You see the images or the architectural details in the packet. The greenhouse was approved last week by the plant commission, and then there's other existing site features on site that were described in the packet. Just a site plan that was submitted here showing the different locations or different areas of the site, and a building plan image of the greenhouse. So staff comments with this. The existing use and proposed site improvement, staff found it to be consistent with the A2 agricultural zoning district and the comprehensive plan. This is an update to the CUP to accurately reflect the current operations, so it's a benefit to the property owner, business owner, and the village. There is no change proposed to driveways currently signage, lighting, or landscaping, but staff, staff did note in the packet with the planned Division Road improvement that discussions are ongoing between the applicant and public works about a future design of the ingress egress to the site. So with that, plant commission recommended approval last week of the conditional use permit for Wendlin Nursery, and I think, yeah, the applicant's here if there's any questions for him or myself.
Any questions? For staff or the applicant?
Need a motion first?
Okay, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item D as presented.
Second.
Thank you. To include discussion with staff or the applicant. Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Got one more.
Okay. We are now on to, oh yeah, one more. Go ahead.
Want to introduce him, Mr. President?
Yeah. Item E, Paul and Christine Ryan, property owners, W 168 N 12394 Century Lane. Conditional use permit, application for a mother-in-law suite.
Yep. So this case was heard last week by the plant commission as well. It's a mother-in-law suite application, conditional use permit for a 5.26 acre parcel off of Century Lane depicted on screen. It is zoned RS1 single-family residence district. Proposal again are from Paul and Christine Ryan, and a little bit about the property again, a little bit over five acres, zoned, single-family. There's an existing two-story dwelling totaling 5,442 square feet with 3,300 square feet of livable space. This proposal is really to convert an existing addition that was added to the dwelling years ago into a separate mother-in-law suite for family purposes. And with that, you can see the floor plan here. That's the existing floor area on the first floor that will be converted to a kitchen, bath, and two bedrooms. And a little bit on mother-in-law suites, they're allowed in any, any single-family district. There are some minimum requirements of no separate access, and also that it must be occupied by a family member, and also the accessory dwelling cannot equal more than 50% of the total living area. Those are some of the highlighted minimum requirements. But with that, staff and the plant commission found this proposal meeting those requirements, so the recommendation was to approve the CUP with four conditions listed in the packet.
Great, thank you, Jordan. Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve item E as presented.
Second.
Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now on to item F, resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of not exceeding $9,980,000 taxable general obligation primacy notes, series 2025A. I'll turn it over to our good friend, Phil. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President and board members. Phil Costin with Ellis, nice to be with you tonight. I have a couple of documents that I'm going to talk through. We have a PowerPoint that we put together to just kind of summarize the upcoming capital borrowings. They're in your packet. You do have resolutions along with our, what we call our pre-sale report, which gets into a little more detail than the actual PowerPoint. So if you want to refer back to something in your packet, that's fine as well. I have the documents in front of me. First, I wanted to just touch base on the Village Center project, and I indicated earlier that I had a chance to meet with staff and the new, newly-elected village president regarding the Village Center project. And as you know, this is not on your pack, in your packet tonight. It's not up for consideration tonight, but I wanted to at least lay out your options for you as it pertains to where we are status-wise regarding the Village Center. And so it was a good reminder to me, there is no TID-10 at this point, but it's a reference point for us. So really, we view this as you having four options once it is brought forward to you, if it's brought forward to you. One is to delay action and seek additional input from the community and potentially developers. And the goal there is to really seek out what I think is the intent of lower density as a possibility, along with a kind of a revision of the residential types that could be reflected and built out into that, into that general area. So I think that's the intent of the newly-elected village president. Ever liked to speak for you, Mr. President, but I think when our meeting came to, after our meeting, I think the goal was to kind of slow this down, seek additional input from the village residents and also from developers. The second option, once it's brought forward to you, is you could approve the project plan as prepared and presented to the plant commission. The project plan really didn't change from March 31st to April 14th. April 14th, the plant commission did approve the project plan and the boundaries, and so you have an option to approve the plan as is. That's certainly an option the board has. Third, the board can approve the project plan as presented, and you can still make changes to the plan once it's brought to you. So you could, as an example I gave earlier, you could approve the project plan and the boundaries, but remove all properties as of, for instance, to the north of Mequon Road. That could be an option, as well as you can make modifications to the plan through your approval process. And then finally, the board certainly has the, the ability to actually just deny approval of the tax increment district by not approving the resolution. So you really have options that are out there, but I think at this point, this is not on your, or in your board packet, will be brought back at some point for further discussion as you seek more input. So I wanted to at least lay out kind of the status of where you are, because we do have projects that are in the parameter resolutions that are in your packet that do tie back to some of the acquisition of property in that area. So I wanted to make sure you understood kind of where you were with the approval process. Lastly, and not on the slide, you do, you are the second of three approvals. The village board to put a tax increment district in place is the second approval, plant commission being first, and then it goes back to the joint review board, school, county, technical college, and the village. That board will have the final say as to whether or not the TID is actually approved. So even with your approvals, no automatic that it'll be approved at the joint review board. Before I leave that slide, any questions on where you are status-wise on, on the Village Center project? Hearing none? Okay, so we have, again, in your packet, we have two documents that are really tied to each other. So in your packet, and I apologize, I had this flipped, A and B. So in your packet, the resolution for series 2025A is the $9.9 million issue that's taxable. And so then the B is actually the, the general obligation notes as tax exempt. And as I explained earlier, the reason for the taxable versus tax exempt, and why we're breaking these projects out, really has to do with the actual intent and purpose of why you're borrowing the money. So if it's a tax-exempt project, that means it's a public purpose project, think roads, equipment, parks, those type of public purpose that everybody can use, those are tax exempt and for the investor, exempt from federal tax. So as a result of that, rates are lower, and what we're projecting and proposing for that tax-exempt issue is a 10-year note. The second issue that we're talking about is a taxable issue where there's a private activity involved, meaning you're purchasing property and you're potentially going to sell that property to an end user. Could be a developer, could be a company, but some private entity would benefit from that. So we have to issue that debt as taxable, and that comes at a higher interest rate as well. So that's why we are breaking these projects up between taxable and tax exempt. In the taxable issue, the, the second on the slide here, what we're proposing is a $9.98 million taxable general obligation note, which is in your packet, 2025A. It'll finance 8.8 million in eligible expenses, primarily property acquisition, some demolition related professional services that are tied back to the Village Center project. You have contractual obligations that have been put in place for, to purchase certain properties at a specific date. We'll talk about the timing in a little bit, but this will pay for those projects, the acquisition and demolition cleanup of the flow resource property. In addition to that, we have included at the request of the village, 1.17 million in land acquisition costs for the Grosnick property that was purchased a little while back by the village. The Grosnick property we have included as taxable because we don't yet know what the end use is going to be. If it's going to be sold to a developer, we, we want to make sure it's taxable, allowing the village to sell the land at a later date. If it's going to be a park, I'm not saying it's going to be, but if it's going to be a park, it could be tax exempt and borrowed at a lesser rate. So we have included that as part of the taxable issue, just to provide flexibility in, in what you do with the land at a future date. So that's what makes up essentially the taxable issue. It's going to be a 20-year issue. It's got relatively level principal and interest payments. Really what we're attempting to do, if there is a tax increment district put in place at the Village Center, is to match the revenues being generated from new development within that district with the principal and interest payment. So we're trying to match those up as part of this financing plan. So that's the structure that we have put together for the 2025A taxable general obligation notes. And I'll talk a little bit more about each one of these in a little bit. The B issue, which is the $4,165 general obligation notes, really is to finance the village's capital projects that you do on an annual basis. So these are projects that were approved as part of your budget process and are included in this financing. So 3.8 million in 2025 budget capital expenses, the next slide will show those projects that are part of your normal capital borrowing. And then we have included 365,000 in some we'll call planning expenses that have occurred regarding the Village Center project as a way to kind of recoup those costs that are currently being borrowed by the general fund. And so it's reimbursing the general fund for those costs. That will be a 10-year issue, again, relatively level principal and interest payments through the life of that debt, which is customary for the village on an annual basis. Small type, I apologize, hard to get this all in one slide, but these are the projects that have been identified. You can see in the middle of the page, if you slide all the way down, you can see where the projects are either tax exempt or taxable, and that's how we've identified and broke out each of the financings to finance the projects that, that I've just referenced and that are on table three attached. So as we go through our planning models to determine what impact there is of doing capital borrowings, we, we do have to make some assumptions. So the first assumption that we, we talked about a great deal is kind of what's going to happen with growth going forward in the village. And so we've taken a very conservative approach versus what's happened over the last five years. On average... On average, over the last five years, property in the village has grown in value by about 6.48%. Now, I don't expect that to continue. I think things will settle down in the real estate market. I don't think we're going to continue to see property values grow like they have, but you have seen substantial growth in the last five years. In working through this with village staff and the village president, we have reduced that by 75%. And we're, in our models, we're saying we're going to grow at 1.62% versus what you have, just to be more conservative where we think growth will occur. You've also seen net new construction over the last five years at 2.38%, and we discounted that by 50% as well. So the intent here is to maybe understate the value growth that you're seeing throughout the village, but to be a little more conservative in what our models depict. And so in our models, when you add those together, we're really looking at, you know, about almost less than 3% growth on an annual basis. I think it was 2.82% growth on an annual basis between property appreciation and net new construction combined. Secondly, interest rates have been a bit of a challenge to get our arms around. One of the comments that were made earlier were exactly right. We have seen rates increase over the last, really now the last year, but really over the last couple of months with some of the financial challenges around tariffs. We have seen not only the stock market, but the bond market also have a lot of fluctuations. The good news is over the last two to three weeks, we have seen rates truly stabilize, and we've been selling for multiple similar rated municipalities and have the good results that we have seen from those bond sales. So we continue to sell. We expect, there was a question earlier about where rates are, on the 10-year tax exempt, probably in the 3.5%, 375% range. And on the taxable, over 20 years, at a higher rate, probably closer to that 5.5% range on the taxable. So we have, again, priced in to our model 40 basis points above where we've seen recent sales. So we have built a little room in here again to be conservative where we expect rates to be, with the hope and expectation that we continue to see rates stabilize and maybe even come down a little bit. I'm not going to spend much time. This is the growth assumptions that I just went through earlier and how we got to our numbers that we used for future growth. The 20, or the 2025 Series B, the tax exempt issue is shown here. We have broken this out between the budgeted numbers, the, what would fall on your general levy, and also the TID portion. So we have two different schedules, one issue, one amortization, two different amortizations, one for the potential Village Center portion of the debt, along with the village's normal capital expenditures. We've done the same thing for, in Table 5, for the taxable issue. We have a breakdown between, again, what would be the Village Center costs versus the Grossnick property costs. And again, one debt issue, two different amortization schedules, so they can be broken out when it comes to budget time, you know what the debt service payments are by breaking these out. So as always, we try to boil this down to truly what's the tax impact of doing capital borrowing on the average homeowner. Again, we do this every time we do any type of modeling for any community. And the good news here is that the village's debt service level is really consistent to through 26, and then starting at 27, we really do start seeing debt service drop off, the debt service levy drop off, allowing for these capital projects to be taken on. Our models in here, we've created two different models to get to the tax impact analysis. One, financing all the projects we're talking about with and without a new tax increment district, because I wanted to be able to show what the true impact is if you decide not to proceed the tax increment district. And I'll show you those numbers a little bit, but I presented those at Plan Commission at their request as well. For the average homeowner, if you don't create the district and you absorb these costs as part of your general levy, it's about $1,200 to the average homer over the life of the debt, over a 20-year period. So it's, I'm not going to say it's affordable or not affordable, because that's different for every person, but it's manageable within your current debt structure. It does not provide, it doesn't require any increases over your general levy at this point, even if you don't create the tax increment district. We also have included a borrowing capacity chart. That's a question that I know has come up from time to time. Currently, the village uses 30, is using 37% of the village's borrowing capacity. What is that? Every community from Milwaukee to Pittsville could borrow up to 5% of the total value of the community as general obligation. When you take 5% of the village's total valuation, and you look at the outstanding principal that you have, you're at 37% of that borrowing capacity. With these two issues, that'll bump up to about 43%, meaning you have 57% of your borrowing capacity left. That changes every year as you see growth in the community, that the amount of capacity you have grows, and as you pay down debt, it grows. So it's a snapshot in time as it stands today. Here's the charts I had talked about. Again, not everybody's a numbers person, which is why I want to do it in PowerPoint, but this kind of shows you what the impact is to the, to the general levy without a tax increment district being put in place. And one of your residents came up to me before, and we kind of walked through these charts. Currently in 2025, when you look at your total debt service levy, the average homeowner is currently paying $517 for debt service levy for all the projects that have been financed over the years. Even with these issues, that'll drop to about $508, and then it'll continue to drop off. I'm looking at the second column from the right. It'll continue to drop off. So these projects fit within your current debt schedule, and we actually don't see any increases as a result of these issues. Now, there are other, obviously, there are future projects that you're looking at as part of a capital plan. To get a better picture, something that we've done for you in the past is we've modeled out future debt issues to show what the true impact of those is as well. The other without TID is the next slide, and in the yellow second column from the right is that number that I just talked about earlier. The difference between the debt service levy with and without the TIF district is the difference that I'm showing for the average homeowner. So in 2026, about $61, it's $60 to $70 a year, with the total being $1,261 at the bottom of the page. That's what I had talked about earlier, that if you don't create the district, then you'll have to absorb some of these costs as part of your general levy, and that's, we wanted to at least give you a ballpark of what it would look like. Now, what we don't have in here is if you sell the land to a developer without a tax increment district being put in place, that'll help offset some of that cost that we haven't represented at this time. The borrowing capacity chart that I referenced earlier, again, you're at 43% of your borrowing capacity, that again will drop off over time as you see more growth and as you pay off some of your debt. So finally, timelines. And our goal here was to establish a timeline that, number one, meets the goals of the village. And one of the goals was to be able to close on the properties that you have commitments to. And I think current, currently, I think by July 1st is when they have to be executed. So the timeline that we had put together kind of fits within the requirements to purchase those properties. So tonight, we have two resolutions in front of you. If you're comfortable with both, we're going to ask you to adopt both parameters resolutions. What is a parameters resolution? A parameters resolution essentially allows us, as your advisor, to pull the sale that would normally occur on a scheduled village board meeting date, and gives us the flexibility to move that date. We still provide all the same information to the village board, just maybe the week before a village board meeting. And the reason for this is with the fluctuations we've seen in the market and the market movement, this allows us the ability to move sales as need be. So if we get to June 3rd or the day before, and the market kind of blows up for whatever reason, additional tariffs are put in place, whatever it is, we have the ability to kind of pause and move the sale to a different date, and that's what the parameters resolution allows us to do. So it just gives us a little more flexibility to move things around as need be. Doesn't change anything for the village, just gives us more flexibility, and we'll stay in touch with staff and the village president before we would decide to move anything. So if it proceeds on the dates that we have used, June 3rd, we would actually take bids that morning, and if the parameters that are laid out are met, then they are approved. The sales are approved, and they are awarded to the lowest bidder on that time, and then we would close on the issues scheduled for June 26th in advance of that July 1st date to purchase the properties. So that's the timeline for the both of the debt issues that have been put up, put together collectively, working with village staff.
Thank you very much, very detailed. I'll entertain a motion on Item F, and then we can get discussion going.
I'll make a motion to approve Item F as presented. Do you need me to choose which version, or is that good enough?
$9,980,000.
Or are we doing both of them together?
Separately.
Separately, okay. $9,980,000.
Thank you. Discussion. Megan.
I have issues with the Grossnick property being in there simply because we already own it, and it does not make financial sense to me to borrow money on something we already own and start paying interest on that. So, I mean, I know you want to replenish, I guess, I don't know if it's a question for Matt, because you had mentioned wanting to replenish the general fund surplus that it was originally taken out of.
Yes, so if you recall, the Grossnick property was purchased a few years ago, and at the time, I believe it is the intent of the village board to reimburse the general fund for that expenditure. Included that on the 2025 issuance here to do that. If the village board, you know, decided to punt until next year, that is an option they have and would have minimal effect on the general fund. It is something that we'll have to address at some point, but if the village board wanted to wait, you know, another bond issuance cycle, that is an option for them.
So it was, it's about two years that it was purchased, two years ago?
I believe it was the end of '23. I'd have to go back in.
Okay, so we paid for it. It hasn't affected us financially yet.
Correct. Following the year-end close for '24, we'll be at about 20% of our, you know, of our fund balance, which is within the range that the village board had designated. So it has not negatively impacted, you know, where we're trying to be as relates to general fund balance.
So the goal to punt for a year, as you said, was just to see, because we still don't know what we're going to do with it?
Correct. If the village board decided to sell the property, we could just, you know, replenish the general fund with those proceeds. If the village board decided to do something besides that, we'd want to talk about whether we want to recoup those costs in the general fund or just pay for it flat out out of fund balance.
So if we, if we punted for another year, would that, can you foresee any issues with that?
No.
Okay.
Trustee Kaminsky.
I just have a question, Matt. So if I remember correctly, back when this was approved, it was part of the motion to replenish, wasn't it, the general fund?
I don't recall what the motion itself was. You know, I think the conversation and, you know, what I took away from the meeting was the plan was to eventually replenish the general fund, whether that be from bond proceeds or the sale of the property.
I know, I remember that distinctly, and I thought it might have been part of a motion. Might be worth checking, because that certainly will influence us in the future, whether we put it off a year. I don't know if we really gain anything by putting it off a year. I mean, if there is some gain, I'm fine with that, but the reality is, we want to replenish the rainy day fund.
Matthew, to that point, we had a conversation this past week about the general fund balance and the percent based on policy. Could you recap that, please?
Yep, so I spoke with the president last week regarding the current state of the general fund balance. The village board policy is to be between 15 and 25% of annual expenditures. Following the 2024 year-end close, right about 4.5 million undesignated, which is roughly 20% of expenditures. So still within that range, regardless of if we replenish the purchase of the Grossnick property or not.
Thank you. Further comments? Trustee Rick Miller.
Yeah, I tend to agree with trustee Cutts that I'm really not enthused about bringing that, that purchase into this obligation. So I'm going to make amend, make a motion to amend to remove the 1.17 million dollars of the non-TID land acquisition cost for the Grossnick property.
I'll second.
Do we have discussion on the amended motion? Saying now we're going to vote on the amended motion, then we'll vote on the original motion? Oh.
The second.
The second, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
Do we have discussion on the amended motion? Trustee Warren.
From your perspective, is this, is this a big effort? I mean, did the time, the dates still work out?
As long as the motion is made without, we'll revise our numbers, resize it, not an issue.
Okay.
We do it all the time.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the amended motion to withhold the Grossnick property, the value? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Financial, so it's.
It's an amendment.
Amendment, all the amendment, okay.
Seeing none? Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Now we're going to vote on the.
I'm opposed.
Okay, one opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to vote on the original motion for Item F. Is that accurate?
As amended.
As amended. Roll call, roll call vote, please. I'll figure it out.
Do we have a new number, then?
I, pardon, what was that?
What's the new number for?
The new number.
Oh, I, you know, there's more involved than just pulling that up, but I, we'll make, we'll remove that grossing parcel, and it's going to be a not-to-exceed number anyhow. We can always go down, and that's what we're going to be doing.
Appreciate that, thank you.
So this is a roll call vote for Item F for the amended motion made by trustee Rick Miller and seconded by trustee Jan Miller.
You already voted on the amended, now you're voting on the.
Okay. All right, so the amended by Rick Miller, seconded by trustee Jan Miller. We don't know what that number is.
It's a.
Just a removal of.
I would just approve it as is with the removal of Grossnick, and we'll resize it.
Sounds good. Okay, trustee Warren.
Aye.
Trustee Cutts.
Aye.
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Borst.
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky. President Soderbergh.
Aye. That motion carries, thank you. We're on to Item H, I'm, Item G, resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of not-to-exceed $4,165,000 general obligation promissory notes, Series 2025B. Entertain a motion.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Roll call. Roll call. Thank you. I'll make a note.
Okay, trustee Warren. Trustee Cutts.
Aye.
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Borst.
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky.
Aye.
President Soderbergh.
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky. President Soderbergh.
Aye, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We are now on to item H, potential policy on the amount of multifamily housing development in the village of Germantown for discussion only. Mr. Russelloff, do you want to tee it up or no? And we did discuss this at the plan commission this past week. It was very good conversation and just to frame the conversation somewhat, a lot of conversation leading during the election, leading up to the election and the vote. My role or my goal was to take the emotions out of the argument of do we need additional multifamily in our community? I asked staff to create a report, which Mr. Russelloff did a wonderful job on creating that report, which we will share tonight in detail, along with some demographics, which I think are very enlightening to me and based on the discussion at the plan commission, they were enlightening the plan commission as well. If, I think we're at 75, 25%. I'll hold my comments for, go ahead, Jeff.
Sure, well, I'll do what you did, just give a brief summary. At your direction, we pulled together some information analyzing the split between multifamily housing and single-family housing and we added a wrinkle, we added some columns dealing with ownership versus rental for communities comparable to the village of Germantown. And when I say comparable, what I mean is we added a number of communities that President Soderbergh asked to be included in the list. We included communities that geographically are close by and communities that are comparable in terms of population and also communities that have been used for comparison purposes in other discussions, including whether it be contracts for fire and police, permit fees for building inspection services, things of that nature. All with the understanding that this list could be a lot more extensive or could be pared back depending upon exactly what it is you determine to be a comparable community. You know, whether it's, you know, percentage of our value in industrial versus residential, our relative location to an urban center, you know, how much of the community is served by sewer and water, things of that nature. I mean, you could go down a rabbit hole trying to figure out how many different ways to come up with what is truly a comparable community. But this is where we started. And at the risk of being accused of cherry picking, we knew that going into it. We presented this list and it is what it is. So if there's a need to, or a desire to see other communities, feel free to let us know what those will be. But I think the conversation will continue, not necessarily to come up with, you know, what, what's the most comparable community and then say what their percentage is and we say, well, that's what we want to be. We want to just use that as a guide for our discussion purposes going forward. So as you can see, the list before you is a list of communities and the ranking on the left column from top to bottom is, is based on the shaded column, the percentage of housing units by structure type, in this case multifamily percentage. And so as you can see, the highest community, Wawa Tosa at 42%, the lowest, the city of Mequon at 14% and the village of Germantown at 25% near the bottom. So that was presented to the plan commission for discussion and I think the discussion went well. I think the, the plan commissioners are inclined to go ahead and adopt such a policy with further direction from the board on, you know, things such as, you know, do we look at other comparable communities, things of that nature? But I think it's, it's worth the plan commission looking a little bit closer and assessing the advantages and disadvantages of adopting such a policy. And then, as I mentioned, at the plan commission level, staff's recommendation would be to amend the 2050 plan to, to show or reflect that, that adoption or policy, if you will. This particular slide shows a portion of our housing section of the implementation section of the 2050 plan. And specifically, I've highlighted the, the objective that says, you know, the village should maintain a balanced housing mix and concentrate new multifamily development in walkable village center areas or other neighborhoods, districts or corridors that provide connections to the transportation network. This would be the objective, I think we would slide in on the right-hand column, another short-term action, which would be to adopt a policy on restricting or limiting the number of multifamily housing units in the, in the community. And then we would, you know, adopt whatever that policy would be. Brian, you can help out if we're going to do something by an ordinance or resolution or just have it in the 2050 plan as a statement of how we're going to evaluate future development proposals going forward. I think when we look at the reasons for adopting multifamily housing policy, specifically to restrict the number of units to be developed, there are a lot of reasons for doing that and a lot of reasons we've heard people tell us why, including infrastructure capacity, community character, trying to preserve community character, reduce traffic and congestion so we don't have too many units and too much traffic. Political pressure is certainly one, we feel it all the time. School enrollment management, environmental concerns, economic stability and, and to a smaller degree, being consistent with planning and zoning and our own 2050 policy. One of the things we need to be careful of, however, are some of the unintended consequences, which can be, in some communities that have done this, a housing shortage. If we're going to rule out a particular type of, of house style or type that frankly is in high demand, then we may not have, we may not be, satisfy that demand and ultimately have a housing shortage, which in turn results in rising housing costs and values for the existing homes in the community. In some places, they've, they've experienced increased socio-economic segregation. Some communities, you'd call that snob zoning, we need to avoid that. We need to avoid that particularly because of the legal challenges and fair housing issues that, that sort of touches upon, depending upon where you go with that kind of a policy. But more importantly, another unintended consequence can be missed economic opportunities and opportunities to provide the sort of community features, uses that are desirable. You know, we talked about in the village center, we need the higher density housing to help support and, and create a demand for the nice shops and restaurants and things. It goes hand in hand. We can argue about which should come first, the chicken or the egg, but it, it goes hand in hand. You need the rooftops to generate the people with the disposable income and to create the opportunities for people to want to come and visit if they're not already living here. And another unintended consequence is one that, you know, not because we have a policy, but we're already experiencing and that is an aging population without replacement. And that was one of the other things, Bob, you had asked us to look into and that was the issue of age in the village and some of the trends. This is information that's on the screen that was pulled together by administrator Krecklow. It shows that over the past two decades, the median age of residents has steadily increased, reflecting broader demographic trends throughout the region, including Washington County. Right now, our median age is approximately 42.3 years, which has increased, as you can see in this chart dramatically, from the year 2000 when it was 36.4. So it's steadily gone up in terms of our aging population. Bottom line is, our demographic profile is shifting towards an older population. The trend is influenced by aging residents, slower population growth and an outmigration of younger individuals. This is something we talked about when the 2050 plan was being discussed, that the age group, that, that, that younger age group was sort of a missing piece for us and something that we need to try and bring back to create that replacement population, if you will, for those of us that are aging out in the system. So with that, I, I guess I'll open it up for, I'll sit back and I'll, I'll stop because I went way past brief commentary or summary. But listen to what you have to say and again, we're looking for a direction from the board to further this discussion toward developing a specific policy with a recommendation coming from the plan commission, then to the village board.
Thank you, excellent presentation. And again, the reason, and I want to thank you for doing this, this is great information, exactly what I, I mentioned during the election that I was, I wanted to do to get the emotions out. We heard a lot of comments during the election. We heard comments this evening about we don't need multifamily homes in our community. I'm going to disagree with that because I, during the campaign, I supported phase two of the village center project, which included multifamily homes. And if we say no to multifamily and we want to keep it at 25%, that means that we couldn't even do phase two of the village center project. So it's an opportunity for us to have discussion amongst ourselves, kick it back to the plan commission for, or, or do, do nothing or kick it back to the plan commission to come up with a policy, maybe going up to 28%. I certainly wouldn't want to go any higher than that right now because the, when we get more single-family homes in our community, everything will rise up. So I don't think we need to go any further than 28%. And Jeff, I believe the, the mix is you're including the 2% for mobile homes to the 73% for single-family, correct, for a total of 75%?
Yeah, that's what, that's what it would be. One of the things we discussed with the plan commission was defining our terms. So we're, we know exactly what we're talking about, what's multifamily, what's single-family? Because there's, there's a crossover, there's some of each that are rental, some are ownership. And what is it, are we really after? Are we trying to limit the total number of multifamily units or just the multifamily rental units?
Got it. And I know based on our discussion that we had last week, you indicated that there's a couple of communities in our region that have gone down this path of setting a threshold on multifamily, is that accurate?
Yes, there's one I know of for sure and that's Economowoc. And they recently, within the last, I think last year, adopted a threshold of 35%.
Got it. And I believe Franklin was another or, or village, Brian?
Brian. Yeah, theirs is not broken down into single-family versus multifamily, but it's a broader commercial or industrial, commercial base versus residential base, so. But they also have a goal along that split as well.
And last comment before, before I open it up for discussion, I asked that we include the population trends and it would appear that we are an aging community at 42.3 years compared to previous years. And my concern with that is that why are, why are we aging? Why aren't young folks moving in our community? Is it because of the lack of amenities, is it because of lack of restaurants, establishments? Is it because of lack of high-quality multifamily apartments? I think it's all of the above. Again, I supported phase two, which included multifamily residences. But my concern there would also be the impact this could potentially have on the school district. If we are in an aging community, does that mean, could that possibly mean a reduction in enrollment for our schools, which would not be good for our schools, so. But that's my comments, I'll open it up. Trustee Kaminsky.
I think it's great that we're doing this and I think it should be an ongoing thing. I, there might be some things potentially we can add to this. And one of the things, I don't know if you, I think it was late last year when we got that report, remember the housing analysis that was done?
Tracy Cross.
Thank you, the Tracy Cross thing. I, I reread that before I came into here and there are some very pertinent facts in there on the, like particularly the last three pages. And I would encourage all of us to look back at the Tracy Cross report and maybe incorporate some of those findings because they did a really detailed survey of, not as significant as you did with all these different places, but the surrounding community for sure, like Menominee Falls and, and what they found was that young people do not want to buy homes anymore. That was among the findings and that they are gravitating towards high-end apartments, not the things that we see in certain areas of Germantown, but the high-end apartments. So as we continue to look at this, I'd like to maybe, maybe we can look at that too and bring some of that into this just for discussion and so everybody's aware of what's out there. And then next I would say, I think when we, it would be important to bring a developer or two in here. Maybe, and let, let's get their perspective on development. Will they develop the restaurants I want to see in Germantown? So I don't have to drive to Mequon or, or Menominee Falls to have dinner. Will they do that type of thing if we don't, like you had said, if we don't have enough people in the immediate area that can walk to these places? I would love to hear a developer's perspective, we haven't done that yet, at least I haven't heard it. A realtor's perspective, a developer's perspective, bring in that report, let us all be sure that we've read that again and looked at the summary in the Tracy Cross report and then determine a policy. I'm fine with a percentage policy, but I think you're right. I think we have to really put the thinking into this and not rush into it. If we're not rushing right now anyway, let's, let's do it the right way. And then you can bring in the school board perspective as well and get all these different perspectives in feeling. And then we see, again, without, subjectively, where we're at. Objectively, not subjectively, because we all have our viewpoint on that. Either we like it or we don't, but the way this village should develop, it's out there and we just have to do the research and find out what that is. That's just my thought on it. And if you wouldn't mind, I, I don't have what you were presenting, that wasn't part of our attachment. And I wouldn't mind, mind getting that.
Yeah, it was last minute. Okay, but no. But I will get a copy.
I would love to just have that emailed, that would be super. And thank you for the report. Oh, one more question, they didn't break out condos on any of these versus apartments, correct? So we, we will not get that.
Typically, it's included in single-family.
The condo is?
Depending on the units, in the village of Germantown, because we don't, we don't, other than a couple of buildings, we, they're more two or up to four-unit condominium-type structures.
Okay, like a side-by-side, that would be like.
Duplex, sometimes duplexes are included in the single-family count versus multifamily. So that, that's where the definition of terms really comes into play.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Cuts.
I think part of the discussion, when it goes back to plan commission or wherever this gets fully fleshed out, is also what do we mean by the multifamily? I know that was mentioned, that and high density, because you have side-by-sides, you have quads, you have all different sizes. And we've had several different proposals come forward. The Friends group has brought a couple forward and that was always said, that's too high-density, we didn't want that. Blackstone is coming forward, that's high-density apartments. I think we need to decide what it is we want and be consistent because I think developers are confused on what to bring forward to us and we're confused on what to, what to approve and what not to approve. So I think definitely this is a great idea to get something definite down for us to go by.
Thank you, further comments? Trustee Jan Miller.
Thank you. Yes, that's, thank you, trustee Cuts, that's exactly what I wanted to know. What is the definition of a multifamily? And if it did, if the homeownership in your presentation actually included condos? And then on these median age trends, in 2000, the age was 36.4. In 2010, it was 42.1. For, and right now, 2023, it's 42.3. It went down a little bit and now it's going up a little bit, but I, I, I see it. As I look at it, it looks pretty steady to me. That's, that's my point. And I do live in a subdivision. The people that are moving out are empty nesters, the people that are moving in are young families. They are either newly married or maybe they have some young children. But I'm seeing more and more young families moving into my particular subdivision. I did have an opportunity to talk to a young person, 27 years old. They're both, they don't live here, but they're pretty typical. And I said, I'm doing a straw poll, I said, can you tell me what you're looking for? They're renting a home, a three-bedroom home. But I said, what does your future look like? And she said, I said, do you want to buy a home and do the lawn and have, you know, a garden and everything? No. No, 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 we don't want to do that. They have a dog. They want to, they want to go travel. They want to play. They want to walk the dog. They don't want to take the time to take care of lawn. And, and all the accoutrements that go with the house. And I said, well, what about your friends? That's just you. And she said, no, they don't want it either. So she doesn't live here, but I'm hearing that from more and more, you know, people. So I think when you're thinking of, I wanted to make sure multi-unit did not include ownership of like a side-by-side condo or a fourplex condo. And, but I think that the condos are a great idea. I really do. And there are subdivisions, not only here at the Blackstone, whatever they call it, Glen, maybe, or something like that, that actually have single-family homes that it's a condo association. And they have everything done, mowing, plowing. It's really nice. So those are, those turn over quickly. And I think that that's something that we should consider. Even for a village center, you can still have maybe a multi-unit, but maybe it looks like, more like a home. I'm just saying. So I think though, it's a good discussion. I'm very excited to find out what the Germantown School District and their surveys and their, both surveys for the, on their, their facilities as well as the actual student enrollment. I think they're both important because we're growing. We're, we, they talked about a public safety building again in the public safety meeting. So these are all expenditures that, you know, we want to plan for. So I think that stepping back, taking, gathering this information and actually opening it up and having neighborhood meetings and probably starting with the Village Center would, would be an excellent idea. That is all.
Mr. President? I just wanted to respond. I think the, the comments by Trustee Miller and Trustee Kaminski are spot-on, particularly with regard to evaluating not only what we can take out of the Tracy Cross report that, that we find valuable, but talking to developers and realtors to getting a handle on the current trends, like the, the people you interviewed, Trustee Miller. Because the 75-25 split that we have before us is a, is a picture of our history. It doesn't account for what's going forward and what the trends are. And that's, that's the magic, you know, place we got to thread the needle is trying to find out what that, that trend is and deal with that accordingly, as well as address our, our own priority concerns. Is it, is it traffic? Is it infrastructure? Is it school population management? Is it community character? You know, what are the reasons? What are the most important reasons that we need to take into consideration? And I frankly, I, I failed to say this before, but I, I, I think this is a great idea. If, if for no other reason than if we have a policy that says we will allow a certain percentage of this type of housing unit, then that puts the developers on notice that we are truly open for business. Right now, we have sort of a bad reputation in terms of dealing with developers. You see it in the recent articles in the Business Times and that sort of thing. And, and part of that has to do with the disconnect between what's in our plan, what's, what staff is saying the plan and zoning allows for, and then what the policymakers, Plan Commission and Board decide and discuss. And then, you know, basically, we all been through it, the, the public reaction to whatever's proposed. So from a developer's perspective, at least the ones I've talked to, it's kind of a crapshoot right now coming to Germantown, whether what they will, what they propose will or will not be approved with a specific policy that says we are open for business, at least up to this point. I think it lets people know, developers know that they, they can come to Germantown and, and provide for us what we're looking for.
Well said, Jeff. Trustee Rick Miller.
Yeah, I like the idea of putting a percentage down to it. It brings some of the subjectivity out of it. I don't know what that number's going to be yet. I'm not quite prepared to do that yet. The other thing I was, I was thinking about as, as we were doing this is the way that housing is changing, just like Trustee Jan Miller said, that it's trending that, that younger families and people do not want big yards anymore. And almost all our developments that are going in, especially around my house, Freystat Road and East, are all those traditional-type subdivisions. When I look at Foxtown, and I'm not using this as this is what I want here, but when I look at Foxtown, they have quite a different variety of things. They have some single-family houses that are right on top of each other and no yards. And they're, they're targeting maybe people in early retirement or retirement for those homes because they don't want yards anymore. But they have a garage and they have their own place. And I think we have to look at, instead of getting back to that traditional-type development that we, we allow some developers to come in and, and look at different things. Maybe brownstones, maybe like I was talking about, no yards, right on top of each others, things like that. And not just have that picture of a, of a subdivision in our head.
Further discussion, Trustee Bob.
I'll start out by saying, in my time in the industry, I have rarely come across a community that had an actual number. The numbers become kind of arbitrary. Terry, you may like 30. Bob, you may like 28. Jan, you may like 15. Bob, you may like the 25 where we're at. Those numbers are just arbitrary. What does that mean? When you look at multifamily as a tool in the box of stuff we have to work with, multifamily is, can be used as a buffer between different developments. For example, at the Friends property, we talk about the single-family being up against industrial. And can we use some sort of multifamily as a buffer? If I'm up against this arbitrary number, maybe I can't get that development in there because I don't have room for any more multifamily. That is a concern that I have. Jeff, in your assumption of what is multifamily, where are all of our senior living, assisted living facilities? Those are all multifamily buildings?
Right.
So I got a lot of inventory of multifamily. We probably should pull that out or identify it somehow.
Yep.
If multifamily has purpose, what's the, what are we being influenced by that we, the residents of this community are so opposed to multifamily? Why do we not want it? We look around our community and we don't like the multifamily that we have here because we don't have anything new? We don't have anything modern? We don't have anything contemporary? We have stuff that is 50 years old. And that is not going to change in the near future unless we start allowing something to happen, which would stimulate those older products to recycle themselves and become something more efficient. Our zoning guidelines and Planning Commission is where we should have this be determined. Not, let's put a number out there and that is it. The Planning Commission should look at the development, look at the objectives of our community. We want to stimulate growth. We want to stimulate business in the central business district. We need to get more residential in that central business district. You're not going to do that with single-family homes. You're not going to get the density where people want it to be by putting single-family in there. Also, you're not going to get multifamily way out on the edge of town. We talked about when the, when the Friends property came in, two 400-unit apartment buildings way out on the east side of our village. That is wrong place for it. Putting the right product in the right place is the way that this should be evaluated. If we have to go to, if somebody comes in and wants to do something in the central business district and that pushes us beyond that 28% to 29 to 30, are we going to have to say no? Or we got to change all of our rules to let them in? We're putting a roadblock in front of their development. It should be more open to receptive. What I am finding, Trustee Miller, you told, you just said that your neighbors are moving out. Neighbors are moving out of expensive houses, aren't they? Are they moving to someplace else in the community? Or are they leaving the community?
There, a lot of them are leaving the community for, for jobs to be closer to their family.
And, but the ones I'm talking to are leaving the area because there's nothing luxury for them to rent. They want a luxury rental opportunity, which was the forefront opportunity of the Village Center project. That's what the original developer came in here for. We want higher living, higher standard. Because she was also in that predicament that everybody in her neighborhood was moving out and they were moving to Mequon, moving to Menominee Falls. They were moving somewhere else where they could get the luxury. We bring the luxury, yes, we can keep these residents here, but it also frees up that house that we can bring in the families that are moving into your area. So I'm not opposed to using multifamily the correct way. Also, when you look at this chart that Jeff pulled together, you have to understand the whats and the whys on this chart. Anybody know about Mequon? They prohibited development in their community for 20 years. We couldn't build grocery stores. We couldn't build the movie theaters over the years because they wanted a 100% single-family home community. That is what they wanted. That's what they were pushing. Their taxes for a residential unit went sky-high because there was no business, no large developments that were paying substantial amounts of tax revenue, tax dollars for this. If you look at TOSA, why do you think TOSA is at 42%? They're fully developed. They're landlocked. There is no place you can go other than tear something down, multiple buildings, and rebuild. That's why they're at 42%. Numbers have some basis on what they're doing, but they're still arbitrary. They're results of what they've been doing. Also, I hear a lot of talk about subsidized housing. How this is, this high-density is subsidized housing. Nobody has talked about subsidized housing. I had somebody chase me over to Whitestone Crossing in Menominee Falls because they are renting to low-income people because they can't find the tenants. That is something we can do through a developer's agreement that in that aspect, we can prohibit them from doing subsidized housing. A TIF district is not subsidized housing. A TIF district is an assistance to get a trade-off for some element of development that we want, that we will participate in. That is not our community paying for these people to live here. It's two different things. The impact on the community streets, we've got a study, traffic study. We've got a traffic study in the works. It is waiting for the final numbers from a developer to tell them what is the traffic counts. Then they can finish that off. Then they can inform us of what needs to be done.
If I could pile onto that?
Please.
So the, the traffic study was approved last July. And when I say approved, it was approved by the Wisconsin Department of Transportation based upon the preliminary concepts that we came up with. And based on those preliminary concepts, there are no impacts, significant impacts from a traffic perspective. And this was done by the guru of traffic studies who the DOT uses a lot. So we have an approved preliminary traffic study already.
The utilities in the area, those were preliminarily looked at when this first came before us. Our engineering department said, yes, our infrastructure can handle all this development that is proposed. Not that it's finalized, but it has been proposed. Our infrastructure can handle that. The school system, we are waiting for the studies to be done. I have bantered back and forth with members of the school board as to whether that number is really low or whether it's really high. I have told everybody, I'll wait for the studies to come in. Those studies are coming in a couple of weeks, two weeks, four weeks, something like that, supposed to be mid-May, I believe. So I'm willing to wait for actual information. But to arbitrarily place a number, pick one that you prefer. We're all going to pick a different number. So I, I won't get behind a, a number like this. But I will look at standards of how the Planning Commission and the Planning Department should utilize the tool of multifamily instead of just limiting it for no reason. So that's my first kick.
Thank you. Further comments from any trustees? Trustee Jan Miller.
And just to add to that, you know, having, having total numbers, I think someone mentioned that one of the communities actually looked at their commercial. And what I am very interested in understanding is, we have a lot of industrial buildings. We have built up Holy Hill from one end to the other. And it is booming, okay? We have buildings going up still. We have buildings standing. And I want to understand how many commercial buildings we have and how many commercial square feet that we have available. So when you're open for business, you should also be promoting what we have as far as a business coming in. Maybe they don't realize we have extra square footage that they could automatically move into. And I think that's really important in doing this balance. I mean, this is residential, yes. But what have we done on the commercial, industrial side as well? And inventory.
Trustee Kaminski.
I think that's a good point. I don't know how much the village can do, but maybe as part of this we're open-for-business beautification plan, there could be part of that, could show what's available. But the reality is every one of those businesses you see in the business park that has nobody in it, that building's owned by someone who is actively marketing it. It'd be like you trying to sell your house. Now, the village board might not know how many houses are for sale in your neighborhood, but you're sure trying to sell your house if you want to move. Every one of those businesses is either up for sale or trying to be leased by a landlord, by a realtor. That's already happening. It's the same thing where I think we're all disturbed when we go down County Line Road. I personally really like linens and things. I can't believe that store went out of business, what, five, 10 years ago? But, you know, it'd be really nice to see things come in there. But again, all those buildings are owned by a landlord who you know is trying to fill them and has been because he's not making any money if he doesn't. He's still paying his property taxes to Germantown. So we're not out anything from that perspective. But the reality is most people buy stuff online now. And that's why a lot of these box, little, little box stores are not going to get filled again. Unless you want another vape store, another tattoo parlor. I prefer not to see any more of that. But that's what you see is the infill in a lot of these places.
Thank you. Further discussion, comments?
I just, I understand what you're saying. There are retail spaces and then there's industrial spaces. And maybe there's something that the village can do to, you know, promote those, in assisting them in getting something that we, we think might be a good plan, that they never, ever thought about. And it could be repurposing a building, right? So that, that was the train of thought I was going down.
Something that maybe you should do as Chair of the Economic Development Committee. Something that maybe you should do as chair of the economic development committee.
That's right.
Great. trustee Baum.
One last thing is, in studies that I've looked at over the years, the, how you develop something can influence the crime rate more significantly than you think. One of the big complaints I've heard on the internet is crime, crime. Multifamily is going to bring crime. No, the fact that we have fifty-year-old apartment buildings is part of the problem with crime. When you bring in a modern building with all the amenities, all the luxuries, you design it correctly so there aren't easily escape routes into tree lines, so the police can drive through and conveniently see everything that's going on. You don't put it behind a couple of strip centers so nobody can see what's going on back there. You bring it out to the street, you bring it so that people can engage it, so that people want to be there, and the people on the streets, in the area, in the zone, in that common space, are going to be the first level of police, because people aren't going to commit crimes when there's somebody around watching them. So crime is something that also came up.
Great conversation. Again, this is going to go back to the plant commission for further conversation. We'll come back to this board. Whether or not we want to have a policy, we'll discuss that. Whether or not we want to have a percent in there, we'll discuss that. And Jan, trustee Miller, I'd love your idea of identifying and cataloging all the commercial space, what percent of the total is available? And that could be an opportunity for us to go out and market that space as well. So, great discussion. Further comments or conversation about this matter before we move on? Okay, thank you very much, and we are now adjourned. Everyone, thank you for coming, and please drive home safe.